Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 26, 2023 Planning Board meeting. If we could, please, if you're able, stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I hate to displace everybody, but we are going to go into an exec session. I'll let Jim say why, because I would mess it up.
The reason is because of my legal opinion about the calculation of the F A R in the overlay zone. Some questions have come up that I need to discuss with the board.
Motion for going to executive session?
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Yeah.
Come back.
Good evening and welcome back. We have closed our exec session, are now back in regular session. There is one other question I wanted to bring up, and I wanted to do it. It wasn't a part of our executive session, but counselor, in respects to emails, especially things that really should come to the planning board, that I think some of us, I know myself in particular, I'm getting emails to my home address, my email address. And at this point, I haven't even responded back. I'm just taking them and forwarding them off to the, the planning department. Is that appropriate?
Yes. All emails should be sent to the planning department. They are the record keeper of, of all the record of proceedings here, not the planning board members individually. So, everything should be directed to the planning department.
And, again, just for purposes of clarity, if we're approached out on the street by another committee member or chair of another board, and we talk about it, there's not three of us there, there's no quorum. Is that appropriate, or do we tell them we gotta take it, just in, you know, conversation? You, you meet at the, you know, at the food store?
I think you can feel free to talk about what you've received at planning board meetings, information that you have. It's, the information is public anyway, so I think that's appropriate. You can't take any official action, and you can't even caucus unless you were part of the legislature. The town board can caucus, planning board members cannot.
Okay, thank you. Alright, we'll move on. We have the meeting minutes from June 12th, 2023. Any issues, concerns, corrections?
Motion accepted.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Alright, we're gonna move into the first item on the agenda, which is SDML Realty, also known as Duncan Route 202. How are you?
Good evening.
Did you get the memorandum from the town engineer?
I did.
Okay.
Received as I walked in.
Okay.
When are you trying to prepare?
Ruben Buck, Engineering Properties. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Since we were last before the board, had a chance to speak with Robin regarding the draft negative declaration statement she had prepared. Obviously, I was handed a list of comments from the town engineer as well. Read through them, all of them seem reasonable in, in items that we can incorporate into the site plan. That being said, ask that the board consider the negative declaration tonight, so we can proceed with our applications to the DOT and DEP to further our site plan design.
Okay. Counselor, do I have to do lead before we do the neg deck, or do we wait till the?
Oh, yes, you do.
Okay. Everybody had a chance to review the neg deck?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, so do I have a motion to declare the board lead agency for this project?
Motion.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
And we have a neg deck in front of us for the Duncan project. Any issues?
None.
No, motion.
Motion.
There's a second. Alls in favor?
Aye.
You're all set.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
No worries.
Okay, next we have the Gardenia Hotel. This is a decision statement, locations 1952 Commerce Street.
Good evening, everyone.
How are you?
Good. I read the draft decision. We're finally, we're good with it all?
No issues?
Hmm?
No issues?
No issues.
Anything from the board?
Not yet.
No.
Counselor?
I had one comment, which I'll take up with John and Robin, but it's just a rewording of the resolved clause at the bottom of the third page.
We have a right to proceed, though?
Yes.
And what would that be?
It just incorporates the language in the overlay zone, the finding that the board has to make to exercise flexibility. I just took the language out of the overlay district.
Any issues on your end, John?
We have nothing else.
Okay. In reference to the Gardenia Hotel, do I have a motion to be lead agency as the town, as the planning board?
Motion. Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
In front of us, we have a nega, negative declaration for the same. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we have a resolution approving a site plan, special use permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan, and tree permit for the Gardenia Hotel. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I'll just say thank you to everyone, planning department and the planning board for their diligence on this. We're very happy to have it approved, so we can move forward on it. And I think it's gonna be one of the more bolder decisions that's been made in, in quite a few years by any board, and I think you're gonna be very happy with the results. So, I just wanna thank you for your perseverance, courage, and, and due diligence on this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any time for shovel in the ground?
I think Monday. You're gonna get started pretty soon. Actually, and then Joe Reena just asked me, I think the next one's on, he just, is an extension on the Maxwell Drive approval? The next thing on the agenda, right?
Dorchester.
Dorchester.
So, Joe just asked me to, you know, he's not gonna be.
Okay, so we're done with the Gardenia. Alright, next we have the Dorchester Glen subdivision. This is a request for first 90-day time extension. Locations 1643 Maxwell Drive. Any issues on the board level?
None.
No.
Counselor?
Nothing from me.
John?
Nothing here.
That being said, do I have a motion to approve the request for the first 90-day time extension? Don't move?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
On behalf of Joe Reena and the principals for Dorchester, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to move into the work session?
Motion.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first on the agenda, and we, we did, just so everybody knows, we did add Walgreens. That's, it'd be seven, Underhill will be eight. First on is Garden Lane Apartments. This is a discussion of residential site plan. Location is 27 Old Crompound Road and Garden Lane.
Good evening.
How are you?
Members of the board, I'm, I'm not sure if you guys got copies of the, of the drawings that we resubmitted. If not, I, I printed out a half-size set for you, if anybody needs it. No?
You wanna share?
I can share.
Alright.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're here, we're here tonight based on, you know, for the, for the owners of the Garden, uh, Garden Lane development, and responding to your comments that we received from the planning board. Do you guys wanna go through the comments, or do you wanna just, however you wanna?
Yeah, we can go, Jerome.
So, the, the first comment was regarding the calculating the 10% open space in the wetlands buffer. So, what we did was, I think, I think the numbers were swapped around here. The open space is based on four, 400 square feet. So, we switched it around, we used the gross numbers to increase the, the 10%. There were no deductions taken, so we've provided 6,788 square feet of recreation space as we show on the drawing. Okay, so that's, that's on there, and the 400 per unit for the open space, the 8,000 square feet, that's also reflected in the revised site plan. Small portion of it does go on the wetlands buffer. You can see it up in the corner there, but other than that, we got everything out of the wetlands buffer. The code doesn't talk about whether or not these uses can be in the wetlands buffer. So, we're, we're just showing a portion of it. We tried to get as much out of the buffer as possible, though. Item number two, the wetlands delineation. I see the town is, is agreeing with it, is agreeing with our statement, so there's no action required on, on that item. The items number three and four are kind of, kind of work together. It's regarding the FAR. I guess this is a, a planning board decision for the units. But basically, what we did was, we, we tried to follow the Hoffman decision, the number of units, and the base, basically in the Hoffman project, the units averaged about 880 square feet per unit. We're averaging 875 square feet per unit, so we're a little bit less. I think where the difference is in the calculation is the, when we, when we do our calculations for FAR, we have to go by the net area, so we deducted the wetlands buffer area, where I believe in the, in the first go-around, they did not require them to reduce that number. So, they were a little bit lower on their FAR, however, unit size, we, you know, we're at about 875 on average, where they were 880. And, you know, again, I don't, I don't know if they did any of the deductions for the, the buffer area. Item number five was just asking us to provide the catalog cuts for the lighting fixtures on the lighting plan. We added a drawing E101, so that's at the end of the set. This is, this is an engineering issue number six, the driveway slope, it exceeds a 10%, however, 14%, 15%, the board can consider it increase up to 15%. Dan, you wanna?
Just, I'll have the engineer go through that really quick.
How, how long in the range is that? Is that 40%?
75, 70 to 75 feet.
Can you just show us where it occurs?
Yes. It's basically, actually, I have the profile here. So, this profile is basi, is basically of the entire driveway, which wraps around the whole site, starting at just the two-way entrance, going around, kinda backwards out of the one-way in. So, basically, it's between stations, five, the PBI stations is 524 up to, I guess that got cut off, the 584, so 542 to 584, so about 70 feet-ish.
And on the, I understand, yeah, that's where you're coming in off the?
Yep, just that section. And so, essentially, it's, what we needed to do is, we were trying to get down as fast as we can, as, in a reasonable slope as we can, to keep this building kinda where it was. The 340 is, is kinda around where the middle of the site, where the middle of the site elevation-wise is, so we were trying to keep that grade down. So, what that does, obviously, it helps the neighbors that are uphill, so they don't have to stare at it, so.
And that part of the roadway is one-way in?
This is just one-way down.
So, it's downhill, not uphill?
That's right. And this is required, obviously, because we needed to do emergency access around. 14% isn't unreasonable, there are plenty of driveways around here.
So, who handles the variance? Is that something we do, or does town board have to do that?
In 195, you can vary requirements in 195. If it's a requirement in the zoning code, then the zoning board has to do that.
This isn't a driveway grade?
This is a, this is a driveway grade. I think the limit is 10%.
Check with Dan, too.
I thought the town board does driveway grades.
And what?
You're correct, the town board has done, by practice, the town board has done driveway grade variances. It's been sent over there, but if you look in chapter 195, you have the authority to modify these requirements. We can look at that closer.
Okay.
Uh, just to make sure. And if it, and if it's, if it makes sense for it to go to the, to the town board to maintain that, that, that's fine as well.
And what about the, the items in three and four?
That needs some discussion. That, that is obviously zoning code issues. And the town board did adopt the rezoning over the allowable unit count, when they, when the calculations were done at that time. So, it was added an additional two. So, I think it's a fair question as to whether or not this, you know, what action this needs, if any, given that the town board has passed the rezoning with the availability to do the 20 units.
See that as an issue?
No, I just wanna make sure. I have a question on, on the floor area ratio. You said that you had diminished the area by the area of the wetlands controlled area. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
If you had not, what would the floor area ratio be?
Oh, um.
I don't know if you have that, but.
I don't, I don't, we, we did have it, 'cause we, that's how we initially derived our calculation. I think it was, it was, it was a lot closer to the, to the point two, which is the requirement. I could get that number for you, but I don't have it handy.
But it's a substantial difference.
Yeah, yeah. It's not, it's, 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 actually, we're going from point two to point three, so the difference is not very big right there, but I think we were in the low twos with the variance request, yeah.
I mean, I can understand that removing the wetland area, but controlled area is defined as a non-wetland area, so I think the argument to not include that, to me, is something worth looking at. I, I, but I don't know what the code is on that, unless.
I think it's a.
Requires it, I think, doesn't it?
I'm sorry?
I believe it, I thought it required wetlands and control area, it just had, defined it that way.
In the, in the zoning code, that's correct.
It, it includes both?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. That was really, I was asking a question, I was trying to pose a question rather than, rather than taking a position on it.
I understand.
I also think, again, when, when it was done under the previous, the Hoffman project, I don't, I don't think there were any deductions required. It didn't seem like there was, based on what was written in the, in the, in the report, you know, based on the numbers there, but I, I can't be 100% certain. But are, are definitely our unit, our unit number, our, you know, we have, you know, over time, the reason, part of the reason also that FAR went up is, over time, you know, we were required to have larger hallways, stairs, ADA accessibility into the project, so it made some spaces wider. Again, we're not grossly adding on to that previously approved FAR count. Yeah, the average, uh, unit we have is 870. And, uh, in the Hoffman, it, it says it's 880. So we, we reduced that to per unit size. Okay. Okay, uh, the next one is item number seven. This was, uh, in reference to a fence on the southern part of the property. Um, you know, when we, when we were, uh, speaking with the neighbors, the neighbors asked that they, they, they weren't looking for a privacy fence. They wanted the trees for the privacy, which we agreed to and incorporated into the design. The fence that they were looking for is they didn't, they were, they just wanted a little protection from people coming from the apartments into their backyard. So the, the black chain link fence we thought was a good solution because the trees will go through there. It'll mask it, but it'll give them that physical barrier that they were asking for. Uh, the green, uh, the green giant arborvitae's, uh, we have, we have our landscape architect, Dan Sherman, here. And he, it, Daniel just told me to talk about that. Um, it is, they are located near the swell, not in the swell.
Hello?
Who are you?
Uh, Dan Sherman, landscape architect. There's about 160 feet of length that's along the south drive, where there's six feet wide between the property line and the curb of the drive. And in the six feet, there's three feet of a cobble swale. So that leaves me with three feet, which is the width of this joint. So the trees that we're planting there are in at seven to eight feet, are green giant arborvitae's. The root ball is about 28, 30 inches like that. So that easily will be planted there. And then as they grow, the root mass will just grow under the swell and the foliage will just expand above the swell. So it's a perfectly good science to plant those trees.
Where, where's the location of the fence in relation to the arborvitae?
It's on the, on the neighbor side.
It's on the neighbor side?
Yeah.
And it's a chain link fence with the black nylon slats?
Four feet high or?
Four foot high, yeah.
So the arborvitae's will just start to poke into it and screen it, but then they'll grow above it.
So you, you're planting the arborvitae close to the fence on the south side of the swell?
Yes.
I think prob, you know, a little detail of, a planned detail of that, I think would be helpful. You know, blown up to a scale, it makes.
We can, we can get that as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And, uh, the last item is number nine, the trash enclosure. Uh, so we, we do have a trash enclosure designed to pick up some of the elements of the, uh, the building, a little stone base on the bottom of, uh, fence that's made out of the same hardy plank or whatever side that we put on the building. And that's already been reviewed and approved by, uh, the Architectural Review Board, ABICA. So they've already seen it and they're okay with it. I, I incorporated on drawing, um, A200. So it's, the details there, two elevations. I think that's it for us. If there's any questions from the board?
Anybody got questions about this?
Just, um, on the, the arborvitae's that you were talking about, that'll be planted next to the fence. Which side of the fence are they going to be planted on? The, your property, your side or the?
Yeah, the, our, the fence that we're putting on has to be on our property.
Right.
So it'll be in board from our, it'll, our, on our property.
Plantings will be.
Yeah, okay.
Scotty, okay. Thanks.
Some time ago, I was aware of problems, I mean, I became, there were problems with the Hunter Brook, um, with the sewer line servicing, not your property necessarily, but this area in terms of capacity. And there were problems with excess flows some years ago in that area. And I noticed that the town engineer in his memo of May 22nd speaks about the need for you to have this property included in the district. It's not included now, am I right? So that, I, I'm hopeful, I just want to make sure it's in the back of your minds that the capacity issue needs to be addressed when you go through that process to make sure that.
And we've actually been coordinating, because I know the system, the pump system's an E1 system.
You have to stand up.
I'm on the mic.
Yeah, the existing pump system's an E1 type system. So every, basically every residence or development has their own pump. They don't all come at the same time and they all pump up into the one, two-inch line that goes all the way down the street. Um, we've been working with E1 to come up with a solution where our pump will fit right into that. And, uh, so far, we've been able to come up with a solution that would work great. So we just have to coordinate, obviously, with Dan.
Okay.
I think Dan said there's capacity, but the details have to get worked out.
That's fine. Okay. Just want to make sure it's on their minds.
And there was also a, a memo to the Yorktown Planning Board from Yorktown Parks and Rec Commission? You've seen that?
Yep.
The board's reviewed that?
Yeah, we, we reviewed it. That's, well, that's part of the genesis of comment in, in our memo. So there's, it needs to be discussion, so the demands that this imposes on the rec system, which will tell you which way you need to go with either accepting the land and whether the land is appropriate for what it's intended for in the code. And then whether or not there is, you know, a ruling or a default to go to the money in lieu. If it's the way in the town enabling legislation and in our legislation, it's supposed to work.
When do we do that?
Anytime.
Anytime.
Well, what's your intent for that open space? Lawn or recreation facility, playground or?
We weren't, we weren't intending on putting any, uh, physical structures there. I mean, we really haven't discussed it in detail with the owner. Um, but we, we weren't talking about, uh, having any buildings or structures there. More of just kind of open space, a place for kids to run around, play, uh, things like that. I mean, the, the code doesn't at all define what has to happen in these two spaces. The closest thing that I could find was under the wetlands, uh, code section. And they did mention a few things, but under the building code, it doesn't, it doesn't really talk about anything. Unless I missed it. Um, but like in, in chapter 178, again, talks about wetlands. And it says, "Part of the, the purpose of the wetlands, providing open space and visual relief from intense development in a rapidly growing area." And then for recreation is providing recreation for hunting, fishing, boating, hiking, bird watching, photography, camping and other uses. Now, if you go under the R3 multi-family district, then they talk about usable space. "The site, each shall have a, a play area or other outdoor living uses. Developers shall provide suitably improved playground, playground, play area." Again, no definition for play area or playground. And then they talk about the square, the, the size and the square footage and the requirements. Uh, "In addition to the above, the developer, developer shall also set aside 10% of the site area for provisions of park and recreational facilities." Again, there is no clear definition for us to go by what that, what that means.
So can you show us on your map where that area is?
Yeah. So, and we, 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 we took, we deducted it. So we, this is all taken from the gross land area.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Which is, which is a little strange because when they talk about in the R3 district, they talk about how you derive, um, let me just pull up the language. So the code talks about in multi-family districts, including R3, which we are in, the floor area ratio usable and lot area square, in square feet, shall be used to calculate, shall be used to calculate the base of net area, right? Which shall determine growth, uh, areas for, uh, some of our calculations. Uh, this is, you know, we're deriving on a net area, but when we start to talk about our areas here for the recreation area, we're asked to derive it by the gross area of the lot. Again, it's not clear, but we did it and we, we did it with a gross area. And in this area right over here, we have our 6,700 square, uh, square feet of recreational space, completely out of the wetlands buffer. We have our open space right, right here in the front of the building. And we had to, you know, we had to put another 2,000 square feet of open space here. You can put, you can put them in pockets, I think, of 1,200 square feet.
Can I ask you a question? I don't mean to cut you off.
Sure.
If I looked at that plan right above that, there's, uh, work for the drainage system, bio retention, it looks like, there's all kinds of landscaping, there's landscaping in the front. So those two plans don't talk to each other, from what I see.
Um, this, this area back here is where we have our, uh...
I'm looking at that plan up there. If I take that plan and overlay it on that plan, oop, it doesn't look like much area. And, you know, sometimes you've got to look at what the intent of the code was. And, you know, we've had a lot of back and forth talk about these recreation fees and what the intent was. And I honestly, just as one member of the board, don't think this plan meets the intent of what that was. And I, again, I'm looking at what's up top and what they're showing on the bottom. And that isn't, we're not, they're not talking the same language.
What's up, up on top, I think is subsurface, correct?
Oh, they got, I think it's above ground. And they're planting.
Trees and shrubs. There's all kinds of planting along the roadway which encroaches into the open space. Is that open space with trees and shrubs?
I, I honestly, I think this is a, is a, you know, we've looked at a lot. Again, we've always said that each fing, each one of these projects is like a fingerprint. They're all different.
Right.
We've looked at areas in wetland buffers for trailways and connectivity different properties. We've looked at project up the street where there, there's a pond with a walking path. This, to me, does not speak to the intent of, of that code. And I honestly think that the fee should apply in this project, from what I'm seeing here.
We were, we really didn't have direction from the code to play around with what, I mean, do we have to leave like a baseball field area open?
Well, I think the intent of the code is, and I didn't mean to cut you off. I mean, no disrespect.
No, no.
That the residents of this facility are going to be using the parks and rec facilities in town. And that fee is to offset the use of those fields, basically helping out because now you have new residents that are going to be utilizing those areas. What is shown up there, just one board member's opinion, does not comply with, I think, with the intent of that code.
If I can just clarify, there's two different sections of the code. The first one is 400 square feet of usable open space. That's, um, for outdoor living uses. And also that includes a play area. So you have how many units? 18?
20.
20. So you got 8,000 square feet of area. That's one requirement. Then there's a separate, a separate requirement, and they can't be double counted. 10% of the site set aside for park or recreational facilities. And if you don't meet that one, you have to pay the 4,000, or 4, $4,000 per unit rec fee. So that's the way I read these requirements. So you have to meet them both. You can't use the same land for both.
We, we have it, it's, it's separated. The way we have it shown on the drawing is now separated. Um, the code also doesn't say we can't use the wetlands buffer for this area as well. But we've pulled it out just because there was some suggestions that we couldn't use it. But I don't know that the code clearly says that we can't use that.
All right.
Which, which area are, are you talking about that has the wetlands and wetland buffer associated with it?
It's, it's, uh, this corner right over here.
Right, but which, which requirement?
What I, what I was saying is if, if we could go into the wetlands buffer, if we use that, we could spread this out and we could get more activity type, uh, spaces for the tenants in there.
But what I'm, I'm just, what I'm, Steve, I'm just asking, you have a, a chart or a diagram that has the 8,000 shown somewhere and then it has the 6,000 shown in another place. Wh- where is the 8,000?
The 8,000 right now is this piece right here and this little piece right here. That's our open space. That's a combination of 8,000 square feet.
And where's your?
Our parks and rec down here is the 6,780, right over here.
So the bulk of your wetland and wetland buffer is not calculated in either of those areas?
That's right.
Is that correct? Just that one corner?
Yeah, just this small corner, about 1,000 square feet.
Okay.
You, you, and I, again, I look at the plan and I just see the side of the road. You know, it, in my head, the, that, that just doesn't work for me with this plan.
We were, we were able to get both spaces in this area back here.
You, if you look up top and you look at the bottom, you, you know, it's the same area and you're landscaping and putting treatment oppo, you know, opportunities up there. And you're landscaping the front, which I think we all want to see. I just, you can't use it for both then. God bless you. And that's the side of the road there. I think this is just a, you know, it's a squeeze. I, I just, I'm going to be honest with you. On just one vote, that, this, this does not work for me. I don't see it at all.
Where, where I was going with it is this, this area right over here, which is part of our open space, we have enough space to get all this back here. If we get all the space back over here and have some kind of direction of what we're going to use, what we need to put there, we could, we could rearrange our plantings and make them a more usable space.
I think the way the plantings are done is appropriate. And I think it meets the intent of what we originally wanted to see. I just think you're trying to squeeze this square footage into that plan and it just doesn't, in my opinion, just does not work. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Can you clarify for me which of the plantings shown on the, the, on the screen? Which of the plantings are proposed as opposed to which are existing? Or are they all proposed to be new?
And I, if I could, just one other thing. The area where they're looking for the variance for the driveway, the area that they're showing for the park land is at that same slope.
14% or so?
Yeah. It, this is just, it's.
You, this stuff and this.
Yeah, it, it's.
So I have.
I get what they're trying to do, but.
I have another, a follow-up question. I mean, what facilities are you?
Could you just answer my question first?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Question's pending.
Yes.
It, it, the, the code doesn't say what has to go there.
Oh, oh, sorry. Just point out graphically on the plan, the larger shapes like that, the big cookies, those are canopies of existing trees that are remaining.
Okay.
So you see along the street, those black dots with the, the bigger shape.
Right.
The Xs and the more graphic little diatom kind of shapes are proposed.
Okay. So, so there is, that plan, just so I understand, it could be amended in terms of what's being proposed for new planting? Okay. All right.
So, uh, just to answer your question, we, we, or, sorry, your question. Uh, there's no, there's no, there's nothing in the code that tells us we need to put X, Y and Z in there. So, I mean, it's, it's open. When you talk about park space, it could be a, a number of things. It could be a place where kids play, uh, cornhole. It could be a place where kids play wiffle ball. There's no, there's no real, you know, there's no real, I gotta have a soccer field on this thing.
I, I think we all are in agreement with that, but a 15% slope on the side of a driveway, to me, is not recreational area.
Okay.
Someone comes down that driveway in SUV and you, I, I don't even know what you'd be doing in that area. You'd break it. So I, again.
I mean, we do have the land back here to, to get everything back away from the, away from the road.
Yep, and then you're pulling down trees and vegetation that the neighbors want to see for a barrier.
No, no, the neighbors are on, on this side of the, on this side of the property.
Yep.
And again, we can rearrange some of the tree. I'm not saying eliminate, but we could, you know, modify.
I think this is a stretch to try to comply with the code. That's just my opinion.
Well, does he comply? If he complies, it's not a stretch.
No, it's, you can't use two things for the same.
We're, we're not using two things.
You got a, a 15% grade. Tell me what recreation activities are going to take place next to a driveway with the? You got a, a fifteen percent grade. Tell me what recreation activities are gonna take place next to a driveway with the fifteen percent grade. I don't mean to be a smart aleck, but I just, I don't see it. And I don't think anybody here is looking to get, you know, the applicants to fund the recreation department. We've had that discussion here too. But this, this is just, to me, a stretch.
But tha- that's, that's the definition of the two, is that open space does not need to be a recreational area, correct? Am I, am I...
No, what it says is...
Ten percent?
The developer shall also set aside ten percent of the site for the provision of park and/or recreation facilities.
Right, but he's talking about the area in the front that's not addressing the ten percent, as I understand it.
That's addressing the four hundred square feet, is that what you're saying? Or, uh...
This, this space is our open space. It's our open space. This is our parks and rec space over on this side.
Right, so just, just to interrupt you though.
Yep.
Open space doesn't mean you have to be able to use it for active recreation, Mike. Am I...
Well, it says for the provision of park and/or recreation facilities.
Right.
So it could be a park with benches for people to sit. That might meet the definition.
All right.
That's, that's, I don't think that's open space.
You'll recall on a couple of developments that there has been open space that is passive recreation, whether it be trails or, as Jim said, a place with parks, uh, that has qualified for the ten percent donation. Uh, and that is mentioned also, I think, and supported in the state enabling legislation that deals with this issue. As far as the o, usable open space, which is the four hundred per unit, uh, that seems, in this case, in our code, to mean more active pursuit of recreation. I think the ten percent could be more passive. It has in the past. It was on, for instance, Arrowhead subdivision, uh, on the Kincart, uh, not the Kincart, the, uh...
Dorchester.
Dorchester Glen subdivision. Um, so I think that can qualify as that and has in the past.
But the characteristics are quite different, right? I mean, in, in both those cases, you had, you know, contiguous, opportunity for contiguous or connecting potential and opportunities.
Yes, absolutely. And it's, it's your, the board's determination as to whether the ten percent is appropriate for whatever it can be used for, I believe.
Right.
So if it, if it doesn't fit into anything and will not provide what you hope it to provide, then it would probably be inadequate.
And the, like, the pocket parks, which were so popular, like, you know, even places like Chelsea and other places that were put in, those are usable by any resident.
Yes.
Right? And that's, that was kind of the intent for recreation facilities for the local residents.
Neighborhood parks, yeah.
Right.
Not just the subdivision, but everyone in the area, yeah.
Right. But this is just, I mean, what you're contemplating here is a field where you could put a cornhole, you know, or, or play wiffle ball or whatever.
Or even if it's a playground, uh, even though it would suffice probably only for the private users here, that can be done. Uh, it doesn't have to be public. Um, and if, if their kids go into a playground and playing on the swings, they're not going to one of our other playgrounds and playing on those swings.
Right.
It has, it has met a certain demand, if that's the case.
Just look at the grading in the front where the planting is, in the top plan.
Yeah.
Right? And the driveway right next to that is the fifteen percent grade that they're seeking the variance on. So you've got plantings, you've got a steep slope, and you've got a driveway going through the area.
Wha- what's your grading like in the southeastern corner?
Um, it's, it's relatively moderately sloped.
You gotta come to the mic.
I'm sorry. So it's relatively moderately sloped, basically from that port, portion, the southeast corner down towards the corner where, uh, the fire discharge is offsite. Um, so it's not very steep. I mean, you could put, yeah, trails, I guess, in there.
Could you put a small playground or something like that? Do you know the percentage of slope roughly? Is it five, between five and ten, or?
I mean, I can't tell you the percentage all the time, eh, but honestly, it's, what do we got, uh, less than ten, eight percent of the steepest?
I mean, we'd be willing to, to consider, you know, carving out areas and making them flatter for, uh, you know, swing sets and anything that would fall into the category. But again, we just didn't know what is required there. I mean, when I looked in the definitions for the wetlands, they talked about walking trails, you know, fot- photography, doing photography out there. They talked about, you know, other things and it's, you know, without any, like, like, if, if it said, like, I mean, it was, that was a, a really great analogy with, you know, if we put a swing set here, it's gonna keep the residents here going on the swing sets rather than going to the parks. And that does make sense. But we don't know, we don't know what else is, you know, you know, if you gave us some suggestions or some ideas of things that we could, we could, see if we could work it in, if it makes sense.
So what I would suggest is that you go in and sit down with John and Robin and take a look at this. Because with the sulp you're dealing with, with the plantings, with the treatment of the stormwater, uh, again, just one board member's opinion, that to me just doesn't work.
I understand.
So rather than belabor it to exhaustion, 'cause we do have a bunch of items on the agenda left, I would suggest go meet with John and Robin.
Can we at least have direction if we can build into the buffer?
You're gonna need wetlands approval. So if you start grading in a wetlands buffer, there's other approvals needed.
If, I, I'm not saying grading, I'm saying like if we were to put a swing set, you know, in there, if we pick a flat spot in that buffer...
If you got an eight percent sulp you're saying in that area?
Well, that...
I think he took the worst case scenario.
And that's why I said...
Yeah.
Go back, do your homework, go sit down with John and Robin and...
That's fair.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right. What else we got?
I, I'm good. I mean, I, I don't know if the board has anything more. I think the, I think this rec space is gonna give us some work.
Yeah.
And I just, just wanna go back to the density question, the number of units you're looking for. I think that, in my mind, if the town board approved this with twenty units, we, we can go with that pretty easily. I don't think we need any other variance. That's a question we needed to decide at some point, right?
Okay, and in the driveway, that's under our purview?
Yeah.
Uh, you know how sometimes codes are, so, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll take a very...
Details.
We'll take a very hard look at that.
Okay.
And I'll discuss it with Jim and the applicant.
All right.
And the town attorney will make sure we're doing it as well as we can.
Anything else from the board?
No.
Jim, you good?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Yep.
Again, sorry to keep you waiting before.
No, it's okay.
John, you think the, uh, planning board could spring for a laser pointer? Good idea.
That's not a bad idea.
Good idea. I mean, you afford all the items.
Darts.
I gotta, gotta point that. Give me a... Very good. We don't have a budget, we can't afford it here.
I don't, I don't know how much John's got. He's still trying, he's still trying to fill position.
I have a couple of them at home. Used to use them all the time.
Are we doing Walgreens?
Okay, next we have Walgreens. Formerly known as CVS Pharmacy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
Chairman and members of the planning board. My name is Lucia Kyokyo with Cuddy and Fader, and we represent the, uh, the owners of the property, Jay and Azaro Partnership. Um, if you recall, we were here in February requesting an amended site plan approval for the project. Um, and what we're asking for basically is to bifurcate the construction of the project. So we're not proposing any significant changes to what was approved back in March of 2020. Um, what we're asking for is an amendment so that the applicant constructs all the onsite improvements in the Walgreens store. And the town undertakes construction of all of the offsite or improvements in the town right-of-way. Um, the applicant will fund the work in the town right-of-way. They'll set up an escrow. But the town will actually be the agency that undertakes that off, those offsite improvements. Um, and I'm, you may recall that this all came about because of the struggles with the DEP. So we did obtain DEP approval. That was in our submission in, in February. Um, so they're very anxious to move forward with the project. Abaca did approve the Walgreens signage and their elevations. Uh, the elevations pretty much use the same materials and colors as the CVS-approved store. Uh, the store size remains the same. The location on the site remains the same. Uh, the site improvements that, uh, were the result of the DEP process, most of all of that is underground. Um, there's a little bit more landscaping. So in general, the, the, the project remains the project that you approved. Um, but we're, we're proposing a different, uh, setup for the, um, for the construction. Um, we worked with the town engineer since we saw you last in order to get those drawings for the offsite improvements in a form with the details acceptable so that, uh, we can bring them to the town board a, and start that whole bidding process. Um, and we should be getting a, uh, an estimate of the cost so that way the applicant can set up an escrow with the town. Um, and finally, uh, we were able to submit some construction drawings to the, um, building inspector after the Abaca approval. He's agreed to review them. Um, he said he would issue the permits once the planning board issued its amended site plan approval. So you can see we're very anxious to move forward, so we, we would request that if it's acceptable, let the planning board act on a, uh, amended site plan resolution and we can start moving forward with, with the project.
You up, John?
This is a, this is a tough one. Um, ac- ac- actually, you know, after a number of discussions and meetings that we had with, uh, a number of people, including the town engineer and the applicant's team, uh, I think the solution in front of you now is probably the best that you can get to go forward. Uh, a little more pain on our side 'cause we have to manage the construction project of the, of the road network. Uh, but certainly the costs will be borne by the applicant as you would expect and as it originally was, being a condition of the site plan. So all of those things will still be in place. It'll be sort of, a little bit of the management will be a little bit different, so.
And it's to a benefit of the traveling public in the area.
Absolutely.
Yeah, a, and that's a good point. I mean, it's not only a benefit for the Walgreens project, it's a benefit for the, for the other businesses of the area and the, and the, and the community.
And when we looked at this originally, I saw him in the back or somewhere, Dr. Greeley was working on this, and they looked at all the developments that could be put into the area, similar to the way we looked at the Underhill intersection, what's coming this way. And I think they kind of put together a plan that would work for everything that could possibly come down the pike. So, and this is basically, it's just, it's, oh, crazy, but anybody have any issues?
So the town wouldn't have to pay any funds towards the construction?
No, just man, it's, well, you're managing it.
Right. Who does that, John? Is that highway department? Is that you?
Engineering department, right?
Probably be the engineering department.
Robin with it.
She could do it.
So it does come at a cost?
There is management, yeah.
Right.
Now, if you think about the project, either way, the town's gonna be watching the construction.
Right, of course.
Right.
I have visions of a golf course. Just keep it in mind.
Yeah.
It's there.
Counselor?
Nothing more to add.
Anybody from the board?
Nothing here.
All right.
Where's the town, uh, does, how's the town fit into this resolution itself? Do they have to sign off on this also?
Yes.
And have provided for in the text?
Uh, it should be, but I would advise that everybody, you know, look closely at the language to make sure it, it's satisfactory to what they feel is, you know...
Are we doing that tonight?
Potential hiccups. You can do it tonight. I, you know, I, I kind of think that the resolution may be adopted at the next meeting.
Okay. Now, be, give us a chance to look it over.
Ideally, we'd like it tonight. I understand if...
We're in work session.
Yeah, we'd have to go to special session. I think there's a lot to look at here.
Picky, picky, picky. I'll talk to you about that. Well, what's the objections to vote night, tonight?
Oh, I think it's the...
Just to review it adequately, that's all.
Legal language on who's signing off on what, just so you don't end up with another, as he said.
Absolutely.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Golf course.
The golf, you're right.
All right, so we'll take a look at the details of this and come at the next meeting. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you for your time. And I wanted to thank planning staff and, um, town engineer's office and everyone who's been working with us throughout this process.
It was a team effort.
Yeah, as John said, it's a little painful, but I, I think we have a good solution. It's a good project, so we're excited to move forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Okay, last but not least, Underhill Farm. This is a discussion of the site plan. Location's three seven zero Underhill Avenue. We did get a, a bunch of memos and...
Yeah, a lot of stuff.
Yep, there's a lot.
Did anything get submitted by the heritage commission? I didn't... Oh, after that.
Yeah, so I, that's where I got an email.
Yes.
My home address, you know, and at one point early on, I said, "Come in, we'll sit, we'll meet, whatever." Now we've gotten so far into the process.
Right.
Uh, I forwarded it off to John and Robin as per legal advice. And they advised to put everything in writing.
Mm-hmm, right.
And there's a certain date with that.
Two hundred fifty pages of writing.
Yeah, so.
Oh, okay. Okay.
All right. Sorry, guys.
Good evening. Paul Galaro, Underhill Farm. And, uh, we're here to answer any questions, issues that you want to address tonight. But before we do that, we'd like to have, uh, Phil Greeley come up and talk about the Rocheambeau intersection, um, in front of our project.
Great, thank you.
I don't have a computer, but I have a memory stick, so it may be helpful to give it to Robin.
This is something I prepared, by the way.
You have copies of this?
I can get you them. I just grabbed one, so.
You did that?
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah. It's off, kind of off topic now for what we're talking about.
All right. While the drawing is loading up, maybe I'll just give a little background. So in, in our original study, we had identified, uh, three or four, uh, potential improvements to im- improve the situation at Rocheambeau, uh, access to Underhill, both entering and exiting traffic. Um, there were, the main three items were site distance improvements. Right now, when you're exiting Rocheambeau, uh, very difficult to see in either direction, especially to the south, mostly due to vegetation, some due to the horizontal curvature. So we have a proposal to, uh, clear and prune vegetation within the right-of-way to increase the site distance. At this time of the year, with all the rain we've had, we probably have about a hundred feet of site distance looking to the left. Uh, we would improve that to over three hundred feet. That's number one. Number two is we had identified and proposed, uh, some dynamic speed control signs. As you're approaching the downtown here, uh, traffic speeds on Underhill, we did speed studies, uh, were well over forty-five miles an hour, the eighty-fifth percentile. So we had identified area for, uh, he, traffic heading eastbound on Underhill to, uh, install the signage and encourage people to slow down. Uh, number three, uh, was relative to pedestrian movements. Uh, we have proposed a crosswalk. And a, as, as part of the one eighteen intersection improvements, we will be reconstructing a good portion of the sidewalk there because of where we're doing the widening and the positioning of the added lane approaching one eighteen. Uh, the other component that would help traffic, uh, is the reduction of the queue. The other component that would help traffic is the reduction of the queue. So at peak times today, traffic will back up past Rochambeau. And looking at some of the accidents and the actual functioning there, you know, people are first dealing with site distance, two, dealing with traffic backed up, so they're waiting for a gap to get out. So we had done some signing and striping improvements, but most importantly, reducing the queue approaching the 118 intersection. There's times where that queue is over eight hundred feet long. We're bringing it down to under two hundred feet. So that will, number one, improve site distance, give an area for people to exit and for people entering. People making a left turn in now won't have to deal stopping to wait for the queue to clear. And the last piece of the benefit is the right turn movement from 118 southbound, turning onto Underhill, which is basically free flow today, you know, people just yield and fly around that curve. Will be reconstructed. The radius will actually be reduced a little bit. But most importantly, it'll be under the signal control. And then as part of the pedestrian improvements, it'll all be, you know, fully pedestrian-controlled intersection. So I think those four improvements will significantly improve the ability for people to get in and out of Rochambeau. Our driveway to the townhouses are opposite that driveway, so we're making some of our own site distance improvements. From a traffic volume standpoint, we are, you know, it's the interfaced or impact is minimal because we don't have all of the traffic coming out there. It's just the townhouse traffic. So that's pretty much it. So on the drawing that's on the screen, on the left-hand side is just a picture of, you know, the typical dynamic signs that we are using throughout the region. They are effective. A lot of people don't realize how fast they're driving when they come into an area. So I think that's number one. We have some other signage, you know, without overdoing signage, you don't want to have too much, too many signs. But, you know, identifying, you know, do not block the box. If there was a queue that extended, those same types of signing and striping would also be done down at Cardinal Court. And then we have pedestrian signing where the crosswalk would be. So, you know, anyone from either Cardinal Court or Rochambeau, if they were walking and they wanted to, you know, not head towards Town Hall, but wanted to go into the development near the pond, they would have two points of crossing. If they wanted to be at the signalized intersection, would be down at 118. And then there's a mid-block crossing near the other access drive. So I think those are all the pieces of the puzzle to deal with. And these were all identified in our original study. It's just the level of detail. We're now showing them in more detail on the plan, so.
Were you recommending that, were you recommending that the speed limit? I don't know if I missed it. I don't think I heard that, that we dropped the speed limit back to thirty on Underhill?
That was part of our recommendations in the study. That's a town board action. But yes, our recommendation would be to reduce the speed heading towards 118, yes.
Yeah, we've been having discussions, you know, with, I've been getting a lot of feedback from people from the town, citizens about reducing that for quite some time now. So I think now would probably be a good time to consider that.
Yes.
Phil, did you analyze the level of service at Rochambeau and predict what the level of service will be in the future with the project?
So the levels of service coming out of Rochambeau are, in the worst time period, level of service C. So that ranges from like fifteen seconds up to twenty-five seconds. The increase from the project traffic is less than five seconds. And the improvements we're talking about will actually make it safer. And the fact that the site distance is restricted under current conditions really doesn't come into play with the quote "level of service" analysis, but that will clearly benefit the operation there.
So for instance, let's say the left-hand egress from Rochambeau, was that a level C in the peak period or was that even worse?
It's a single-lane approach, so it's calculated as a combined level of service. So that's the effect of, I can't tell you what the breakdown, but the average vehicle delay exiting in the afternoon, again, putting aside the fact of the queuing and just based on the volume that's passing there, was, you know, between fifteen and twenty seconds.
Okay. And the improvements, the total improvements, including the 118 intersection, will they have a positive effect on the level of service at Rochambeau?
Yes, you know, the, it's not just the level of service, but it's the safety, I think, is most significant in terms of what we're doing there.
But the level of service gives you a little quantifiable number to understand, you know, the effect, right?
Yeah, if you look at, you know, the charts in the traffic study, I think there was the delaying, because there, once you go to a four-way intersection, there's some implicit, you know, change in the operation. But the changes in levels of service are less than four seconds as a result of the project traffic not only coming in and out of the townhouses, but the total project traffic.
So Rochambeau will remain in the peak period at a C, essentially?
Correct.
But not a noticeable increase in delay or anything?
Correct.
Is it possible, or is it already designed, that the intersection will create a little bit of a gap for those folks to take advantage of?
Yes, so...
Or if not, can you?
So there's two things. Number one is the design and the control of that right turn movement will provide some more gaps. In terms of, the DOT doesn't like to put, I'll call it, extra time delays for the vehicular traffic. There'll be, just with the increased pedestrian activity from this project, that will create some additional gaps. And in terms of our analysis, we provided increasing the, I'll call it, the clearance interval and all red slightly. I don't see that DOT would, the other way of doing it would be extend the red time. But DOT, I don't think would approve that. So I think the improvements to the signal that we're proposing, the improvements of the control of that right turn movement will definitely make it better, you know, for people exiting there.
So people will likely find it easier to find a gap to move into the traffic lane?
Correct. And with reducing the speed, coming from the other direction will also be helpful.
And do you have a recommendation on that? Is that thirty miles per hour, twenty-five?
I would recommend thirty, not lower than that. Because the speeds that are approaching, you know, from the parkway up, they were running, you know, forty-five. But if you advance, sign it as you're coming into the downtown area, you know, it would be similar to as you come into on, you know, 202 and some of those other areas where the speed gets reduced.
So there's a do not block the box?
Correct.
On the one side?
Correct.
And you don't expect that with the, with the intersection improvements at 118, that the queues will reach Rochambeau that often or at all?
They should not reach that unless there's an event out of the ordinary.
We're here to take any questions.
So we've gotten a flood of information as late as today. I do want to talk about the Westchester County letter, dated June 22nd, 2023. Have you had a chance to take a look at that?
Sure.
What are your thoughts on this letter?
On the county letter? Well, I thought that it seemed to focus somewhat on complete street issues and pedestrian connectivity. So I think that's something to be looked at and thought of. I think the intersection is well-done so far. There may be some tweaks to it. It will connect the area to, you know, through the intersection. I think there's that opportunity. But whether or not, whether or not there's full and clear pathways, I'm not sure quite yet if that's been accomplished, so. Because right now, using the intersection across as a pedestrian, you're led into the property, which is fine. But if you're, say for instance, coming from Glen Rock or you're coming from Rochambeau, I think you should make consideration for those folks that may not understand that they can walk through and use that or be inclined to. So maybe there needs to be some pedestrian amenities that go up to, you know, Rochambeau and Glen Rock. On the other side, there is a sidewalk that goes up to Rochambeau. It probably stands to some reconstruction because it's been made of asshole. I think that's a consideration.
I think it's probably fair to the public that we talk a little bit about what this letter says and then hear what the applicant has to respond. This letter that we're referring to is from the Westchester County Planning Board, to which this application was referred for their review. The letter came in on June 22nd, or at least was dated on June 22nd. After describing the project, they have several comments. One comment consists of consistency with the county planning board and local policies. And I'm just going to try to summarize it so people know what we're talking about. Says that they agree that the proposed development would be an appropriate level of residential and commercial density, but they do have some concerns. They state that the project doesn't necessarily fully comply with PDDOZ. And I don't remember what that stands for. Okay. And where did my thing go? They talk about the objective concerning complete street designs, as John mentioned, does not appear to be met. There are no sidewalks or bicycle infrastructure. And they recommend that there be a single, simple means of travel to neighboring sites in the Hamlet Center. I think that's a comment that I've been trying to make, that we consider how this connects to the rest of the downtown area. Another comment that they made is that parking in the front yard is not, should not be required. PDDOZ regulations don't permit parking in the front yard unless a waiver is granted. I don't know from, who gets that waiver or from whom. They question the establishing of a large setback containing a parking lot fronting one of the main gateways into the Hamlet. And they suggest that we move away from that. It's also something that we've been talking about, not sure where we're going to end up with that. They talk about fair housing. I think the applicant is prepared to address the housing, but the question of affordable housing is raised by Westchester County. And they state, in their words, not mine, that they're disappointed by the conclusion that no affordable housing is provided because the town doesn't require it. So they suggest that some additional work be done to study the housing issue. Then they go into wetland protection with DEP, which the applicant addressed in their response, which I'll leave to them. They point out that we need an enforceable maintenance program for stormwater management. And they recommend using more pervious pavement than not. And recycling provisions need to be shown on these plans. They recommend bicycle parking on the site, the use of green technologies, especially on the rooftops. Those are some comments that our members of the public have made. And so that's, to me, it's a, you know, some significant questions remain on how this is going to finally work out. But I thought it would be best for people to understand what the Westchester County Planning Board position is so that we know what the rest of the discussion is leading up to.
That's a good...
That's right.
You don't try, you do. So, all right, so I'm sure you guys want to talk to this.
Sure. Let's go past the first two items, okay? And let's talk about three and four, which basically, that should all get worked out with our DEP submission. And, you know, whatever the DEP asks us to do, basically, that's what we do, you know? And we'll incorporate whatever they're looking for at that time, right? I think they'll address all these items when we go through that process.
Can I just stop you right there? I mean, what you're, which seems to me that you're saying, maybe I'm wrong in interpreting it. It seems to me you're saying there's further work that needs to be done on wetlands and buffers, but we don't have to deal with it at this level because you're going to take it up with the DEP. Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay.
What I'm saying is, is that, you know, the basic design is in place, okay? And now we're preparing our submission for the DEP and we will work through all these items at that time.
Okay.
As far as New York State DOT, we've already submitted to them, okay? They have our plans, correct? Yes. Recycling's no problem. Bicycles and personal e-mobility devices are fine. The green building technology is okay and the universal design. So, you know, I guess what we're talking about is one and two, and let's hit two first. As far as I'm concerned with two, is that, you know, we've talked about this not only with the town board here, and there is no affordable housing requirement. And what we are providing, though, is three different levels of housing. We're providing townhouses, condos and apartments. We're three different types of housing for this project, which, you know, it'd be much easier to just build townhouses or condos or apartment. We're doing three different, so we can, the code actually says that, you know, that you want some diversity. And that's what we're doing. So I, go ahead.
Also to add to the affordable housing question as it's presented by the county of Westchester. The county of Westchester now, with this comment, is advancing their policy initiative. It is not a question relating to a hard look issue under secret. We have covered that in our fiscal analysis. We have covered that in what Mr. Galero just said about the type of housing that we are providing. This is a policy advancement, not a secret issue.
If I could just hang on one second. So Jim or John, just on that?
The county does have a policy that they have to follow that furthers, quote-unquote, furthers fair and affordable housing, which is advocacy. They have a model ordinance that they ask, you know, the municipalities in Westchester to adopt, which we did. But they always have comments such as this because it is their requirement to do so in order to check the box, so to speak, in terms of furthering fair and affordable housing. And that is a discussion point, if you will, and that I'm being lighthearted with HUD and all their discussions that they've had with HUD. So they are, they need to do this. They need to have...
They need to have comments such as this, which is essentially always advocating for fair and affordable housing. So that is actually true. And I think that's the major reason why these show up and continue to show up.
My question is, affordable to who? Who's affordable? If you can pay the rent and you can buy the house, it's affordable. There's so many degrees of income.
Yeah, they...
You can't handle them all.
Well, they have guidelines, Willie. So, you know, they have, um, the median income of, of York, of, um, of Westchester. Uh, that comes out, I, I don't know if it comes out every year, but, you know, HUD gives you those figures. And affordable housing is usually affordable if you are making eighty percent of the median income. You can afford certain things if you have a certain size family, et cetera. So there are charts that they have, that they follow. And, and that's what is affordable. By the way, those, most of those incomes, you will have to be a, uh, well-employed person in order to afford those, even though they are affordable under the county's guidelines.
I'd also like to add that the county is asking that you look at affordable housing, but it's not the job of each applicant that comes before the board to meet every possible housing need that the town may have. You may decide the town needs rental housing. You may decide the town needs housing for elderly to downsize from single-family houses to, and that this project advances those goals. And you may say that the project doesn't address something like affordability. I don't think it has to address it. Certainly, um, a lot of the housing being built in lower Westchester or central Westchester, New Rochelle, Yonkers, White Plains, is not addressing affordability, but it's addressing a need for market rental housing.
Yeah, and the, and the fact remains that our town code does not have a set-aside law. So it's not, it's not that the applicant is, you know, not compliant with our own town code.
It's more of the county's wish list.
That's exactly it.
That's what this, that, that all their comments are just, are along those lines. This is not a binding letter. You could have a fatal defect in the review if you fail to refer out to the county. Once you have checked off that box and you refer out to the county, the letters that come back from the county, uh, do not supersede your jurisdiction or even your town board's jurisdiction, according to first point. So the letter from the county comes back to this board is purely advisory.
Well, I don't know about that. I think it also raises issues that we need to think about, okay? Whether we address them in the way the county wants us to address them or not is a completely different question. If we do a thorough review of the housing needs that this project is providing and we say, as John said, okay, it meets needs, it forwards our goals as the board interprets them, then we're done. But it's raising an issue in my mind that I don't think I want to summarily dismiss by just saying that there is no set-aside law. However, I am very appreciative of what John said in terms of the multi-pronged housing approach that you've got here. I just want to, as I've said, we're creating a record once we get to this end, endpoint on this project. I don't want somebody to come in and say, you missed this, you didn't do that, you didn't talk about something else, okay? So I may come down a, as trying to raise these things, but I'm, I'm really doing it to make sure that we have a solid foundation to go on.
I understand that, we appreciate that. I would just remind this board that even within your own, um, I would say maybe sister agency within the town of Yorktown, this issue about affordability
I know.
has been part of this record. And I appreciate the county advancing their policy, but it has, this is not the first time we've discussed this.
I, I think one of the things that this letter does is it highlights all of the things that we've been talking about for fourteen months. And even as you went through it, you know, your, your commentary was, you know, these are things we've been looking at, thinking about, concerned about. Uh, you know, the housing diversification is meaningful to me. You know, having a property that has three different types of opportunities for people to buy, purchase or, or rent, uh, is something that is somewhat unique, you know, for us. So it highlights to me all those same topics that we've been looking at, diving into and really developing over the past several months, so...
Okay, should we continue on, working our way backwards? So, shared parking. Yep, the way I read it is if you, you know, they're recommending we remove parking spaces. Is that, do you read it the same way?
I think relocate is what they're talking about.
Relocate?
You gotta come up to the mic or you're gonna get, Tom's gonna get mad at you.
There, there are two points that they're making. One is shared parking to reduce the amount of parking. And the second is relocating some of the spaces. So they're, they're intertwined, um, in terms of shared parking would reduce the overall parking. So it, it would accomplish both items. But their second point is, you know, the positioning of some of the parking.
But there is shared parking considered already on the site.
Correct.
So there's the twenty or thirty spaces that the senior center will use
Correct.
that will also be used by your residents in times that they're not used by them.
That's correct.
There's also, I think, benefit that the parking associated with the commercial space will not be used in the overnight condition.
Correct.
And therefore residents can utilize that parking. Uh, I know that there has been some elimination and moving around of some of the parking on the site. So it, it has to, to date been considered. And there is some shared parking already on the site to the extent that there can be more or needs to be more. I'm not sure of that quite yet, but...
We're, we're willing to land bank if you want more spaces. You know, we're minimal to that. I think we've mentioned that before. But for right now, we feel the amount of parking we have is adequate for the site, okay? So going to the parking in the front yard, um, which I guess is referring to, uh, the one eighteen, east side of the building. You know, one of the items that we did very early on is the historic review by shippo. And one of the things they requested was that the roadway in the front continues. You know, that we make sure we don't change that. And so if you're going to take that roadway and you're going to wrap it around, that's, you know, you're going to go through that area, okay? Plus, we, we also wanted to make sure that we provided a, a, a good means of egress for the Beaver Ridge project, okay? Um, so there again, it, you're going to be going straight there. In doing that, you, there's nothing you can do. I'm sorry we don't have an overhead, but Jovina's not here and he has all of that. I don't think you have anything, do you, Robin? Or you do? Or maybe you can put that up. Because even if you left that...
Yep.
Yes.
If you left that traveled way, there's, there's really nothing you can build, um, of substance between the drive and the property line on one eighteen. So, you know, I think where we position this is, is the best place you can. I mean, if we put more parking, um, to the north where the new senior center is going to be, that area, that means that that building is now, gets pushed closer to, um, the historic house, which, you know, we, we actually pushed it away from there. So, I, you know, I understand, you know, they're making this point, but, you know, we also have two front yards that we got to deal with.
Yep.
So...
I, I think there's a difference here in, in, uh, a lot of the properties that exist in the overlay district, which are predominantly commercial properties. Uh, this now, and I think in its proposed condition, will be more of a campus style. And the, the, the requirement or the, the direction in the overlay district to prevent parking in the front yards is really, I think, meant more towards commercial properties where the connection to the pedestrian and to the streetscape is much stronger and much more important in the, in the more urbanized areas than it is on this particular property, in, in my belief. Now, the LOR, I think, speaks to that when it, when it identifies the setting and feel of the property, that you're looking into a campus style through some, you know, old stately trees to a, to a historic building with, uh, you know, historic pond, et cetera. In terms of placing the parking there, I think, um, I don't think that the buildings necessarily would benefit, or I should say that I don't think that the setting and feel and the, uh, aesthetic quality of this development would benefit from moving the building or any of the buildings closer to the street to eliminate front yard parking. There is front yard parking lot there now on one eighteen. And I know that I have, in my comments to the application, applicant team, uh, spoke about maintaining as many trees along one eighteen as possible because one eighteen does read more as a greenway and less as a, um, as a downtown urban property. Uh, so that will be being done. There's also the potential, which we've employed in other, in other developments where you utilize a type of hedge that will block visually the parking and the cars that are parking there to the greatest extent that you can and bring your eye towards the new architecture and the old architecture. So I think that's the difference here. Uh, well, I mean, I appreciate that they picked that up. But I think that, um, in this case, it's not a necessary aesthetic decision to, to, to be made.
There's just so many of these different agencies that look at this. If you went to strictly historical, you'd clear every tree on the site.
True.
Because it was a farm. You know, it, it just, and we've heard from each one of these disciplines, it's very difficult to kind of meander through these. You gotta come to a middle ground at some point. And I, I think we've talked about the state and their requirements and what they've looked for. And our consultant and your consultant are coming to an agreement on the driveway and the parking. And I know John's been beating the, the drum on the landscaping and how that could help it. I also know that we have to be sensitive to the landscaping because it's the front of the historic areas, that whole view shed. So there's a lot of moving parts here. At some point, there's got to be a middle. What, the one thing about this that, and this is probably more towards Dr. Greeley, we keep going back to this, this walkability and the, the ability to, to move from one area to the other. Is there any, I mean, I, have you seen anything that could make this clearer? And again, I don't know how much they look at. I mean, do they look at our meeting minutes?
Talk about the state's restrictions?
Well, we, we have state restrictions, we have the county saying one thing. You've got all these plans in place for, you know, pedestrian family walkability and...
I, I don't know whether they looked at the grades on the plan either because one eighteen, you have the stone wall along one eighteen. So as you're driving on one eighteen, it's not at the same grade. So where these parking spaces are, and with John's, you know, recommendation of like a hedge treatment, because you still want to be able to see through to the mansion.
Right.
So when you're driving, you're actually, you're not going to really be looking at the car. It's not like you're at the same level. So I don't know whether they really looked at the grades. We have the state restrictions. I think we can fine tune, you know, we've, as I said before, some of the existing sidewalks along the south side of, uh, Underhill are going to have to be replaced as part of our widening. So there'll be wider, you know, uh, full concrete sidewalks because that's a requirement. Whether there's other connectivity points, we have the four crossings at the corner. So anybody from the project that wants to cross, they can cross, uh, can get to the sidewalk on the other side of one eighteen, which has a nice buffer. When you walk that section, you don't feel like you're right up against the road. Uh, I think that provides the walkability they're talking about. In terms of extending it up further, I don't know. That's a decision from the town. I mean, uh, we, we're providing, at least from Rochambeau, to get to our project or to get to town, I think it's a much better condition because there, there were comments about the width of the existing sidewalk and the condition. Well, we're going to improve a good portion of that. Um, and then we're providing a crosswalk to get to our project. And then you'll have, you know, the walkability within the project itself. So, you know, if they're talking about connecting further, extending further towards Glen Rock or French Hill, you know, that's a whole different discussion. But I think the areas we focused on provide for the pedestrian connectivity that they're looking for.
And I think on your end, your discipline, I think you're dealing with a lot of existing conditions like Rochambeau.
Correct.
I don't know if that would have been, if you were designing that today, if it would be built like that. I'm sure it's not compliant with all the applicable codes we have in the books today. So you're dealing with kind of an existing condition. You're trying to make better. Again, at the county level, I don't know how much they're, they're looking towards that. It's like the, the main structure, right? If you made that house comply to the existing building codes we have now, I'm sure it would be torn down.
I kind of get the feeling that you're, other than by vehicle, you're entering this place like it's an amusement park. It's literally coming from these four corners into that main entrance. And it literally does cut off the connection to the rest of the town. I, I understand there's a big stone wall up all along one eighteen. Nobody wants to open that up. But there is a whole part of property that is literally unused other than parking lot. There's no entrance, no exit, no bicycle path, no footpath coming off of it, one eighteen. And I realize one eighteen in that section is not traveled by foot other than maybe from the people from Beaver, Beaver Ridge. But there is a whole bunch of property there. And to me, as a, basically, I'm looking at it, it's almost the entrance to a park. You're only going in one way and you're coming out one way unless you're going in by vehicle. Because you have to come in from those four corners where the crosswalks are. And that's the only safe place.
Well, the, the only other way you would come in is through Beaver Ridge. If you came in, if you came across Kear Street onto Allen, you have a sidewalk there. That's where, you know, people walk today. And then if you walk through Beaver Ridge, has sidewalks. So it would get you, you know, from that direction, you have connectivity for pedestrians. And from, you know, if you were coming from this direction, yes, you'd be on the four corners. If you were coming from Rochambeau, we're providing a crosswalk and we're, and we're going to be improving a good portion of that sidewalk, uh, and, and connecting to the project. So that, the only area that I would agree with you that there's no connection is from like Glen Rock. But there's no sidewalks on Glen Rock.
The majority of the people that are going to go to that site are, other than driving in, are coming in through those four corners.
Yes, oh, agreed, because it's the, it's the controlled corner.
Yes. Dr. Greeley, your experience with DOT
Yes.
on these streets that are limited access?
Yes.
Can that be changed? I mean, we have a, a project here that, you know, what Bob was talking about is, is it, it could be a wonderful gateway and connection into a revitalized overlay district, which extends the whole length of one eighteen, basically. Is there no way that you can bring in that strip in some way? Can that be changed by DOT?
Along the west side of one eighteen, you're talking about.
Is it a political issue?
It's, no, it's, 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 it goes all the way through the Attorney General's office. So i- if you're talking about process to get it done,
Yeah.
it's a multi-year process. It's probably four to five years because I've, I've gone through it. They also look at where there is existing sidewalk connections. And they want the connections at the controlled intersections. So we have this intersection. There's a controlled crossing at Kear and Allen also. That's where they want the connections to take place. So could you ever get a sidewalk along the west side of one eighteen? Uh, it would be a far, far reach. And the, the area that you have for a good portion of that, Aaron, is, um, limited because you have to keep the, if you want to keep the stone wall and you want to keep that character, the remaining distance to fit a sidewalk in there, people are going to be right up, you know, essentially up against fifty-five mile an hour road because at times that's what people are traveling. So DOT is going to look at it and say,
No.
No. I mean, that's what it boils down to. But it's not, it's, it's, it's a process that's not just DOT. It goes to the Attorney General's office. It's very involved.
But even with the sidewalk that is... But even with the sidewalk that is connecting one eighteen to Kear Street? Because that is part of the traveled public in, in the traveled way, that they have the right to walk there. It's not, they can't ban it, them from walking there.
Correct.
So why can't, just as we provide a, a traveled lane for cars, why can't we provide a travel lane to the two controlled intersections?
You could. But what I'm saying is for them to approve it because the limited distance? If you look at the available distance between where the edge of the travelway is
No, I understand, I understand the practicality issue.
Yes.
I'm just saying theoretically.
Yes.
So if you were in the room with the, the planners that drafted this memo, what would your response to them be?
I would point out to them where all the connecting points are. I think in terms of, you know, the, the bicycle connectivity, I don't know who's bicycling on Underhill right now. So, and, and along one eighteen, you have shoulder areas that people would use. I think if, if I was getting over to the rail trail, I would either, you know, cross here and then connect over to the rail trail, either via Kear Street or going down Underhill.
Again, they're, they're looking at all that, I would hope, right?
They're looking at the set of plans that were sent them and, and that's it. That's what they get. And, and they got, of course, they had the E I F that they went through as well, but.
I, I don't think they really, you know, focused on the existing sidewalk on the south side of. You know, they mention it, but, you know, the condition of it and the, and the improvements there. And, you know, I think, you know, the improvements at the intersection are there to accommodate not only vehicles but pedestrians.
And bicycles are not permitted on sidewalks.
Correct.
Even though I don't think there's anybody running around giving people tickets for that. It's supposed to be in the
It's supposed to be in the roadway.
Right.
Shoulder.
Right. All right. Don't wanna talk about this anymore or move on?
I think we beat it to death.
Well, again, as Mr. Box says, you're, you're creating a record. So every one of these comments, concerns, or questions that people have come in on, I know we've, we've been talking about the walkability and the pedestrian, the traveling, walking, traveling public and people being able to get around. I know that Aaron's been talking about that. I know the affordable housing has been talked about at every meeting. And now we're getting a le- a letter from the county that are kind of outlining it. So we, we want to make sure that whatever we do, we, we, we dig into the weeds and we make sure that we have answers because at some point, there's a suit or anything else. We want to make sure that we did everything we could to vet these things. And I think we're going through that process and we're doing that.
I believe we've actually addressed at one time or another every
Absolutely.
point that the county has made.
Yeah. Every one. Yeah. The one thing I would highlight in this letter, if I'm reading it correctly, is they say they agree the proposed development would direct an appropriate level of residential and commercial density.
Yeah.
And density has become the big issue. And that's, they're basically saying
It's all right.
They're good with that.
Yep.
So how can we start wrapping it up?
Go ahead.
No.
Please.
Well, I said, how can we start wrapping it up? We've been beating this thing around for a while.
We have, I, I know they've answered the questions in a forum. We also have a lot of new letters coming in.
Well, you have two more days open for written comments.
Right.
Till the twenty-eighth, close of business.
I'm sure we'll get one from the Heritage Commission.
We did.
Well, so we, but did we get, there was supposedly breaking news on encampments or something? I mean, was there?
That, that hasn't come in yet.
Yes.
Otherwise, I've seen everything else. They say they're well, they will, they're willing to present something, information on that, but they haven't.
The problem is we can't open it back up to presentation. That time has come and gone. If we did that, I will tell you Susan would be the first one up there next to them. It's just, right? You're gonna have, everybody's gonna come up and want to speak again. And that's a box we
We did it, and you said there's two days remaining for submission. I mean, people can write four days from now.
Yeah.
And we'll still get it and read it. But, but relative to having the meeting open for comment?
Right. So if we get, whatever we get from them documenting what they say they have, they have two days to get it. So it sounds like from what she said, they have all that together. They just have to submit it to us.
Yeah, I, I don't know what they have, but they are going to send something according to them.
Okay. We got our consultants, they got their consultants, and we're knocking apart.
So with the two days left and all the information we've just gotten, how do you suggest we proceed? Do we go through what they've submitted to us now or do we?
Ultimately, we have to, we have to submit the, we have to do our findings on secret.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah, that, that's the, that's the ultimate next step is to produce what, you know, a draft version of what your conclusions would be based on the record. And then, of course, part of that would be a resolution, a draft resolution as well. So that, I think those are the next steps, logical next steps.
I agree. All right, so we have two days left with this open comment.
Yeah.
We review that.
They review it.
We start working on this document that we'll dig into. And it ultimately adds towards a resolution.
Right.
Jim, anything to add?
Nope. There's, be a lot of reading and a lot of typing and a lot of editing over the next
That's for sure.
Three or four weeks.
Anything from the board? Any questions you want to add? You guys got anything to add?
No.
Does that sound like reasonable next steps?
Yeah, I mean, we would like to get some type of timeline here. You know, when, when will we, you know, do some of this?
I know we have two days left with the writing. After that's done, I would yield to Robin and John on, you know, timeframe to get everything together.
Well, we're gonna try to get stuff for you to, you know, look at
A big task.
at the next meeting, yeah. It's a big task.
Would that be a resolution at the next meeting?
We're, we're hoping to produce the draft NAGDAC documents and a draft resolution.
But we still have to come up with the first document.
Yeah, well, of course, absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that's it for the night.
It'd be interesting.
I have a motion to close the meeting.
Motion. Second.
All in favor? Thank you.